Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in a part of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for the nation, God, his people, with keen justice. Thank you. Next order?
The next order of business is to approve, uh, the order of the agenda. I have one change to make. Uh, item number four on the regular agenda has been withdrawn. Item number four on the regular agenda has been red- withdrawn regarding the ordinance number eleven forty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. And the order of agenda, there has been a motion to approve it with the amendment. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Jurdavich made the motion. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next order of business is item C is the approval of the minutes for December second, two thousand and nineteen. They have been, uh, distributed.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Thorsted, seconds. It's been moved and seconded, uh, to approve, uh, the minutes of December second, two thousand and nineteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the building permits. The report has been distributed and is in the city packet.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits for December, uh, sixteenth as distributed. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next order is the consent agenda. Uh, there's items A through C. They have been distributed. I would call to the attention of the public, one item on item C is, uh, on the consent agenda is to schedule a five-thirty public hearing on the Sand Hills Fourth Edition, a replat and rezoning from agricultural to light industrial that will take place on Monday, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdavich. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Before we get into the regular agenda, it is my pleasure to introduce to unite the new director of the West Fargo Library, Carissa Hansen. Chris.
Good evening, Commission President Dardis, um, and Commissioners. My name is Carissa Hansen, and I'm the new director of the West Fargo Public Library. I am so thrilled to the opportunity to lead the library and take us in new directions and of course work with all of you. Um, prior to becoming the director of the WFPL, I worked for the Hennepin County Library System in Minneapolis for the University of Minnesota Libraries and most recently for the past couple of years for the West Fargo Public Library. So I already know a lot about the fantastic work that our staff do on a daily basis to serve West Fargo residents. And most people know that the WFPL provides free access to books and movies, but you might not know that in two thousand and eighteen attendance at library events totaled nearly fifteen thousand. Uh, this year attendance at our summer reading program events in the months of June and July totaled nearly two thousand. And on Saturday mornings over the past year, you could find upwards of fifty kids packed into our children's corner of the library for a STEM storytime. If you can't come to the library, that's okay too because we'll take the library to you. Among other outreach work, each month our staff hosts twenty off-site storytimes at local daycares, and we also provide book delivery to daycares. And you might not know that you can check out a lot more than books at your WFPL. You can check out passes for local arts and cultural events, ND State Park passes, mobile Wi-Fi hotspots, iPads, and tablets for children. So the task at hand now is really for us to flip the narrative about what the West Fargo Public Library does in our community and expand and build that awareness for our programming and our outreach and our services and get public input into what the future of the library looks like. So I thank you for your time, and I will be around after the meeting to chat with all of you and members of the public. Thank you.
Welcome, Carissa. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, first order of business is a five-thirty PM public hearing for the YWCA Community Development Block Grant, better known as Grace Garden. Mitch Colkins, welcome Mitch.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Uh, I'm, my name's Mitch Colkins from Lake Agassar Regional Council. Uh, I'm here tonight to do the final public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant that was awarded, uh, to YWCA for their Grace Garden permanent supportive housing project. Um, and as, uh, City of West Fargo was the applicant and the pass-through entity for those funds, therefore have the, uh, final public hearing tonight. Uh, just a quick reminder of what the project was. Um, it was awarded around two hundred fifty dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the Governor's Fund discretionary, uh, pool of CDBG funds. Uh, it was used towards, uh, the acquisition of the land through a long-term lease, and, uh, they built about thirty units, uh, portable housing developments for those, uh, uh, domestic violence, uh, survivors and, um, those are formerly homeless. So, uh, the per- what I'm really just in here tonight is to, uh, answer any questions that you may have about the performance of the CDBG or, um, and about the project itself.
Thank you, Mr. Colkins. Commissioners, any questions of the gentleman? Great facility. All right. No commission questions? All right. We'll close, close the regular agenda and we'll move into the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak on the, um, YWCA Community Development Block Grant? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone that would like to speak to this issue, the community block development grant for the YWCA? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll go back to the regular agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We need a motion to close out the grant. Correct? Mr. Colkins?
Um, no, he just needs a closed public hearing, I'm not saying.
All right. Very good. Moving on to item number two, West Fargo Fire Department Transfer Agreements. Mr. Shockley.
This is Fisk. Uh, good eve- good evening, uh, I'm Mr. President, members of the West Fargo Commission. I'll just briefly cover the, the agreement, and then I'll let the city administrator just briefly discuss the, the actual substance of the transaction. Uh, as the commission will recall, over the last approximately year and a half, we've been working to separate the, uh, West Fargo Fire Depart- Rule, Fire Department, Inc., the private entity, uh, and create a West Far- official city, uh, of West Fargo Department, Fire Department. Uh, and this agreement, uh, transfers the assets from the private entity to the public entity being the City of West Fargo, uh, and then allocates some assets to the West Fargo Rule Fire Department. Uh, and it ties up all the loose ends guarding that existence of that private entity. The private entity is wrapping up, uh, and all of its assets will be distributed to the West, the City of West Fargo, uh, within the agreement. Uh, the West Fargo Rule Fire Department and the City of West Fargo will continue to cooperate. So it's, the residents really aren't going to see a change, uh, in what's happening from the exterior, but internally, we're just transferring over all of the assets to the city department. Uh, with a few exceptions, the agreement is quite extensive and includes a lot of the, the details of just wrapping up, wrapping up business and maybe have administrator talk briefly about the substance of the transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Mrs. Fisk?
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. Um, over the last quite a few months, um, Eric Jarabich as Fire Commissioner and Dan and the Rural Department, Rural Fire Department Chief as well have been meeting and going through this. Um, I, rather than go through all of the logistics of it, I would, if you have questions, I would be happy to answer them, or Dan is here as well as the Rural Fire Chief is here. Um, it's a very fair agreement. I think this is going to be an amazing thing for the city, and we've all talked about it. This is a great step forward for everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Commissioners, any questions of Mrs. Fisk or Mr. Shockley? Seeing we have our, our chief here, is there any questions of the chief?
Just a couple of, uh, chief, speak up, or speak up. Come up to speak, I should say. Sorry about that, chief.
Oh, sorry. Good evening.
Um, just a couple of things for clarity for the, the public now, as we split off into two departments, the West Fargo Rural Department will not receive funding from the City of West Fargo, that's correct. So we're funding the, the Fire Department proper, but the rural is a separate entity in and of itself, correct?
That's correct, yep. It'll be its own separate entity with its own, uh, revenue stream, its own budget, its own bank accounts, and everything it needs to do to, to survive.
Okay.
And it's not, none of those monies are going to come from the city.
Okay, so the gaming, uh, the department used to have gaming, that's all transferred now over to the rural side. We're not, the city's not involved in gaming at all?
Yep, that's correct. So all the fundraising mechanisms that have been placed for a number of years have been transferred over through an approval through the Secretary of State to the West Fargo Rural Fire Department.
Okay, good. Thanks. I just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. Anyone else? Any questions for the chief Fuller? All right. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Your pleasure, Commissioners.
I'd make a motion to approve the, uh, transfer agreements.
Commissioner Jurdavich moves to approve the transfer agreements. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Thorsted, seconds. Been moved and seconded that the West Fargo Fire Department Transfer Agreements be approved as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next order of business is the appointment of Dan Fuller as West Fargo Fire Chief. Mrs. Fisk?
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. At this time, I don't have the official oath of office, but what I'm requesting of you is to appoint Dan Fuller the West Fargo Fire Chief effective January first of two thousand and twenty. And I will have his oath of office and have you present it at the first meeting in January.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Any questions of Mrs. Fisk? Oh, all right.
He's really good, and he just came back from Harvard.
Your pleasures, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Olson moves to appointment of Dan Fuller as the West Fargo Fire Chief. Commissioner Jurdavich, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, chief. Next order of business is item number five, the Convention Center Financial Presentation by Mr. Jim Larson, Finance Director. And he's pointing at Mrs. Fisk, so I think this is a tag team.
Well, we tend to do that. Um, I, I'm going to have, have Jim represent, um, all the different information. He created the financial analysis, and I want to tell him thank you in front of everyone. He did a fantastic job, as you all know, because you were able to look through the dynamics of it and make some good solid decisions. Uh, what I'm doing right now is I just want to give you some information from Charlie Johnson, the Executive Director of the Fargo Moorhead CBB, as he was not able to be here tonight. He said Jim reached out to him to provide an overview of the information that's going to be presented tonight, and he just wanted to say that the CBB is very grateful to have been included in the process. They were happy to assist with the feasibility study. But what they want to do is defer to the West Fargo City Commission on evaluating Mr. Larson's report and making a decision on what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Mr. Larson?
Commissioner President and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. As we started off with the, um, there we go. The study was to be, originally there was a study completed by stone planning, and that was in regard to the viability of the operations of an expo center or convention center in the City of West Fargo to be located at the Red River Fairgrounds. That study actually was fairly positive, and it said that operations were sustainable. But the next step was to explore the financial options of how do we actually build this? How do we pay for this facility as it came forward in the community? The other part I wanted to do is called sensitivity testing. In other words, is there's different factors that in, uh, that are inputted to determine how the financial viability will come in. We wanted to see just how minor or major swings in those, uh, inputs would affect the bottom line of the, um, project. So in looking into considerations, we had to look at different sources of funds. In other words, where the, where is the funding for this facility going to come from? The primary, the primary source of funding was to be a TIF district that would be going over approximately a hundred acres to the east side and a little bit to the south of the fairgrounds. And, uh, based on planning, generally you get about eighty percent of that would be viable, for buildable. The rest goes into streets and other infrastructures. We also needed to look at the ongoing financial operations because once you build it, is it, you know, is it a going concern? Is it viable? We also looked at the footprint, because as you can imagine, the cost, how big you built this facility would determine a lot on the cost. We also used the cost to build. We used a local, uh, architect and construction manager. We wanted to get real numbers of today, so we used that. And I'll tell you, the cost came in about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. These are very comparable to the cost estimates that are being, being used when school districts are building buildings today. So we believe that they're current and, uh, represents the reality. Also wanted to look at cash flow because while we might have enough to get started, we have, can we handle the cash flow going out for the next fifteen years? So we looked through two thousand and twenty through two thousand and thirty-five. I want to just quickly touch on outcomes, and then from there, and then touch on some sensitivity, and then leave you an opportunity to ask questions. There were a lot of inputs that could be brought into this, from costs to the value of the TIF, how fast the TIF would grow, and that, those revenues would be brought up, how much value was brought into each square foot of the approximately eighty acres as it was developed. And there were a number of other timings, rates of interest, uh, cost of borrowing, cost of return on cash balances held. And so we've, we entered those inputs so we could move them and see what kind of sensitivity we would have. First scenario I'm going to present is actually a base assumption, what we thought would be most realistic. The City of West Fargo would be asked to contribute two point seven five million. The Red River Valley Fair would be putting in one point five million, and that actually would be held as an escrow towards future operation losses or deficits. Assume the evaluation, a valuation increase for the TIF districts of about thirty dollars per square foot. I worked on these valuations with our assessor, Nick Lee, and he has a great schedule showing whether it's rural, residential housing, all the way up to the hotel. For example, if a hotel is built, we figure a valuation of about eighty dollars per square foot increase. Multipurpose is actually less than that, uh, less than the thirty dollars. By the time we got done with running all the numbers, but, and got out to the end of the fifteen years, we had a cash deficit of eight point three million. So from my perspective, that's a higher risk operation, and we would have to find a source for that eight point three million. We ran a second scenario, and this was said, what can we do to get it to work? Again, we're taking liberties at this point, not approved facts or information, just liberties of saying, we think this is how we could get it to work. The City of Far- West Fargo would still put in two point seven five million, but the Red River Valley Fair would need to contribute about eight million total to make it work in cash flow. We assumed a valuation increase of thirty-five dollars per square foot. That's a fairly aggressive valuation, but to make this work, that's what we had to do. And then with this, we've come up with a zero cash deficit. So that would be positive. But again, we don't have any commitment from the vet, from the fairgrounds to put in more than the one point five million. We have shared all this information with the fairgrounds so that they are aware of it, and we have not had a response back to say we think that would be worth trying. Sensitivity. When we take a look at this, um, one dollar change in that valuation, that was at thirty dollars per square foot or thirty-five dollars a square foot, one dollar change in that valuation, and it's a four hundred thousand dollar swing in the project. Not a big number, we could probably get that to work. If there is one year change in the valuation, we use the ten year ramp up in the base model and in the model that would work. If we moved it out to eleven years, for every year we went out, it was another six hundred and sixty dollars, six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that we would have to come up with. So again, just one year change. If we change the cost per square foot at ten dollars, it's eight hundred and fifty dollars. For every ten dollars of cost on the construction, it's another eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when we started looking at it, it, the things that are quite sensitive in the nature of construction, the na- you know, to projectile ramp up on a TIF district for over ten years is challenging. And this assumes that we'd get an eight million dollar contribution from the fairgrounds still. So from a, from a financial perspective, unless we're able to find a source of funds for that eight million dollars and then some, there was a fair amount of risk to go with this project, or the city would have to come up with some additional funding or other sources. I'll be glad to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Questions from the commission? Mr. Thorsted?
Uh, Jim, on your calculations, uh, what did you, um, anticipate full build out of the TIF? Because obviously that's where your funding would come from. It, it doesn't happen overnight. Were you anticipating ten years it would be full build out?
Ten years.
So did you use a graduated scale?
We used a graduated. I just used a straight line graduated scale, approximately one tenth per year, or one eleventh if I did eleven years.
And your calculation was based on a certain type of, uh, development there? Was it light commercial, heavy commercial, or?
Light commercial, most of it, yes. Uh, we know that we could not go with residential as that would not be allowed by the other political subdivisions that would, that approved the TIF, or would have to approve the TIF.
The Commissioners?
Good, one, one additional comment. Because this is being TIF, the eighty acres or the hundred acres that's being TIF, uh, one other thing that came into is, we would not have, some of our, um, tools that we use to develop or to bring development in at a rapid pace or a solid pace is TIF, pilots, and other types. Those would not be available because we're already taking that incentive just to build the convention or the expo center. Without those incentives, we'd have to develop additional incentives, and at, at this time, we were not identifying others that would, that might make that successful. So it would have to come organically, which is a lot more challenging, as you know.
And slower.
And slower. And so that ten years might be aggressive without that.
Mr. Larson, would you share with the community, please, uh, the square footage of the expo center, uh, with regard to your cost? How many square feet was, was the center?
We were using fifty thousand square feet in the main open area, and then another twenty thousand square feet in the surrounding for a total of seventy thousand square feet.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you.
Uh, I want, I do want to acknowledge that the stone planning group of the, uh, feasibility study was funded by the fairgrounds, City of West Fargo, and the Fargo Moorhead, West Fargo Convention and Visitors Bureau. We split that expense. Commissioners? A motion to accept the report, please. I'll move to accept the report. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. It's been moved to accept the Convention Center Financial, uh, Report as presented by Mr. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jurdavich, seconds. Been moved and seconded. Mrs. Fisk?
In the absence of a Economic Development Director, um, I need to ask the commission to direct the staff to whether or not you want us to pursue this any further, and if you do, in what avenue, and if you don't, just please say so, so that we know that we've done all we can do at this point.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Uh, there is one thing to note here, uh, when we're talking about the Red River Valley Fairgrounds and the Red River Valley Board of Directors, there is not a cash infusion. They own the land. So at our last meeting that we had with the Fair Board, uh, President and, uh, Ryan Schultz, and myself, and Mrs. Fisk, and Mr. Larson, and others, uh, uh, we asked them, to them, for them to respond to us, being that they own the land, that this is not feasible without their commitment in moving forward. Uh, and so at this point in time, uh, with regard to Mrs. Fisk's, uh, inquiry, I would guess that, uh, uh, we would have staff stand down until we hear back from the Fair Board. At this point, it is, uh, we're not going to act any more, spend any more money, ask any more staff to commit any more time until we hear back from the Fair Board. Is that acceptable, Mrs. Fisk?
That is exactly what we need, and thank you.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second with regard to accepting the financial presentation by Mr. Larson on, uh, the Convention Center at the fairgrounds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is a result, a presentation of Funding Bond Issue two zero one nine B, the sale. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners. Well, from, from a financial point of view, this is exciting for me. It's fun when we can bring good news, uh, at, and not at the cost of the, uh, taxpayer. Let's see, I gotta make sure I get all my tools here. Let's see if this'll... There we go. Okay. The, uh, City of West Fargo went out to sell bonds for the, for two issues. One is for, to refinance it, three existing, uh, issues that we have. Dordy and Company, they did the work in determining where, which bonds would be the best to refinance at this time based on current rates. There are three bonds that were out there, the two thousand ten B, two thousand eleven C, and two thousand twelve A. You can see the dollar amounts up on the screen. So those are the current amount of the bonds that are outstanding, and so those were the ones that were refinanced. Um, also included in there was another thirty-four million, eight hundred, for new money for fourteen projects, thirty-four million, eight oh two, eight thirty-two. The numbers don't quite add up because we have other costs in there, but those are the costs of the projects. And the creation of determining what those projects would be and the cost, we're closely with Dustin and engineering to develop all that. A lot of work was put in by engineering because we had to do a lot, we have to do projections to make sure we have all costs, current and future, for those projects. And so we're fortunate that in, our engineering department is able to put down a complete schedule for us to do the bonding. It also is important that we did this bonding as soon as possible because rates are going up and getting more difficult to get good, uh, rates. We did have negotiations on December eleventh. Uh, this commission has, uh, had passed a resolution earlier related to this bond issue to go forward with it. So we had a bond purchase agreement that was ex- So we had a bond purchase agreement that was executed on December eleventh. Closing for the settlement is December twenty-third. That's when the funds will come to the city of West Fargo. An important part that a lot of times most people don't bring out, but they were able to negotiate a call date of May first, two thousand twenty-six. The importance of that is, is how soon you can refinance these bonds or pay them off early should you have the cash in hand to do that. And with, we're, we're getting some prepayments on our, some of our assessment districts. This could be a very valuable tool because you can pay them off and stop incurring that interest. Generally, they would have been out seven to ten years on those call dates, so we appreciated that negotiation. The other good part is the two point nine four percent. We did an issue earlier this year that was two point nine six. So again, with a larger issue, we were able to beat that and that's, uh, real positive because since we did our last issue, rates have gone up. So again, with our ratings, we retained our A-one rating, which was, I mean, you know, we're, we're pushing it, but we have a, we're financially very strong as a city and been able to prove that to our rating agency out there. So we continue to do well in that. We had a seven point, um, seven point six five six savings, which is a net present value of one point six two one million. That's a real number and that savings goes totally into the refunding bonds, the ones that we refinanced. So those that are part of those three districts or those three debt services today, they will recognize, they will receive those actual savings with their special assessments. Uh, the annual cash flow savings, a hundred seventeen thousand, and we actually will be doing the bond redemption on, uh, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. So this shows the savings per bond and I just want to touch on it because as a commission, you have, you've asked that as staff, as we, as a, a, all, the obligations of an assessment district are met, we're to stop collecting. So if we have a twenty-five year assessment district and all the obligations are met, let's say in year twenty-two, we will not collect years twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So that's where the savings are. So all of the savings from the, the change in rate and the premium are all going back into it so that the taxpayer will have the savings at the end of the day. But I will let you know that we don't adjust their payments down. We keep, the payments will stay the same, but the term will shorten. So it's kinda like when you have a loan, mortgage, you can pay early, but your payment doesn't go down and it's the same with, with special assessments. I had that question come up today, so I thought I would like to clarify that. Uh, any questions regarding our bonding?
Questions from Mr. Larson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Commission President, you actually don't need a motion. The bond sale results are already accepted by the pricing committee.
All right, thank you. Uh, I would like to compliment, uh, Mr. Larson, Mrs. Fisk and Mr. Scott for the work that he did on, uh, this working. This is a true savings to the citizens and taxpayers of West Fargo. I know that Mr. Larson and Mrs. Fisk were in negotiations with, uh, all of the terms, both of the interest rate as well as the, the dates, and so, uh, greatly appreciated. Thank you. Next order of business is item number seven, review the petition for improvements for Eagle Run Plaza ninth edition. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Commission President Dardis, members of the commission. Uh, before you and your packets, there is a request, uh, to install improvements for the Eagle Run Plaza ninth edition. Uh, along with the, uh, petition, uh, signed by, uh, the Four Horsemen LLC, there is also a map and legal description of our proposed improvement district that will, um, be created again to bring in the, uh, infrastructure into that development. Um, pulling up the map right here, the, uh, improvement district will basically just encompass this particular subdivision, this development. Uh, you can see it's on the, uh, corner, I'm sorry, this isn't... Oh, boy. Sorry about that, let me start over. Okay. So what you see on the screen here is the proposed improvement district boundary. Again, this, uh, development Eagle Run Ice, Eagle Run Plaza ninth edition is on the corner of Ninth Street West and Thirty-second Avenue West. Uh, again, the improvements will be, uh, specific to this particular development, so the boundary will go no further than the, uh, proposed, uh, plat of Eagle Run Plaza Ninth. Um, what I'm scrolling through here is the petition for the improvements, again, signed by Four Horsemen LLC. It meets our, uh, standards requirements. And as I continue down here, I'm gonna just show you a brief overview of what the developer has submitted in terms of the proposed improvements. And on your screen, there's Thirty-second Avenue West, Ninth Street West on the left side here. What they will have is a public access and utility easement that runs east and west as well as, uh, a short segment that runs north and south connecting, uh, to both Thirty-second Avenue and Ninth Street. The city will own and maintain the utilities, but the streets will be owned and maintained by the development. Again, uh, pretty straightforward. The improvements really are only gonna benefit this particular development, so again, the, the improvement district that we're asking you to create today, improvement district thirteen twenty-nine will be, uh, special assessed only to within this development. So with that, uh, what I'm requesting is to accept the petition for the improvements and approve the creation of the sewer water storm and street improvement district thirteen twenty-nine and direct the engineer to prepare the engineer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Is there any questions? Mr. Thorsted.
Uh, seeing that they have two proposed access points or, uh, modifications to the streets, uh, are you okay with those?
We are in the process of analyzing that. We, uh, about a month ago awarded a contract to KLJ to, for three different traffic studies. This is included with their, one of those particular studies. Uh, we hope to, uh, have the results of that probably towards the end of January, but, um, at first blush, it, it appears that they'll meet our minimum requirements, uh, specifically because they're only requesting a three-quarter access, uh, on the Thirty-second Avenue and then on Ninth, they are requesting a full access. Uh, we, at this point, think it would be o- appropriate and okay, but again, until that study is, is completed, we won't make a decision.
Mr. Scott, will you explain to the public what a three-quarter access is?
Absolutely. Uh, so a three-quarter access will allow for a left turn movement in, so if you're traveling westbound on Thirty-second Avenue, you'll be able to take a left turn into that development. However, if you are leaving the development and wanna go westbound, you will not be able to take a left turn out onto Thirty-second Avenue. If you are eastbound, you will be able to take a right in, and again, if you're leaving the development and wanna go east, you could take a right out. So really, it's, it's restricting to three different movements versus a full access where you can, uh, go in either direction.
Thank you.
And just one follow-up on that. Then on Ninth Street, they're requesting full access, so that, that would change our median there and with the proposal to be a daycare center there with the elementary school just to the south at certain times of day, that could be quite hectic.
Absolutely. And again, that, that's the premise of, of having this traffic impact study done. Um, both of these access points, if approved, will require modifications to the medians. Thirty-second Avenue also has a median, so, uh, not only will we get a recommendation on whether or not th- the types of access that they're proposing will be approved, we will also, uh, have a recommendation on how to modify those medians accordingly and whether or not they need, uh, turn lanes, uh, so on and so forth. We wanna ensure that, of course, anything we do is gonna present a, a safe traffic environment.
Would those modifications go to that district also?
Yes, they will. And so at, and at this time, you know, we really haven't done any preliminary engineering. That's, that's part of what we're requesting tonight is, is to proceed into, uh, preparing an engineer's report, which is where we will study the nature of the improvements being proposed and how to best, uh, serve this development.
Additional questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your pleasure, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the petition for improvements and approve the, uh, creation of the district and allow the engineer to prepare his engineer's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Jurdabig seconds. Been moved and seconded, uh, for the petition improvements of Eagle Run Plaza ninth edition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have been remiss in my duties this evening. Commissioner Simmons had notified us earlier in, uh, in the day that he is under the weather and my apologies for not sharing with you why Commissioner Simmons is not here this evening, that he's not feeling well, so my apologies. Uh, next order of business is item number eight, the final plat approval of South River Estates addition, a subdivision. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, your honor commissioners. Um, just pulling up a map here. We received this application to accommodate the plating of a developed residential neighborhood of eight homes and a private road previously been split through individual auditors lots. Uh, plating the eight lot subdivision will also include plating of what is currently known as South River Estates Way as public right of way. Um, this property is right off Cheyenne Street, south of Fortieth Avenue. Uh, in regards to the plat, city engineers reviewed some core sampling of the road service and although it would not meet the city's current standards, it's acceptable due to the minimal traffic it handles. It's a rural, uh, section roadway. Um, it is paved. Current roadway is a rural section and the neighborhood does not have sanitary or water service within there, uh, so it's open ditches. We already provide winter maintenance though to the neighborhood, so they are plowing it. This wouldn't be an addition to our current, um, workload. Due to longevity of the neighborhood, um, we would not recommend requiring that the road name be changed. Our street naming address standards would limit that designator of way for private roads. Uh, we do have some discretion on that. Typically, a cul-de-sac such as that coming off a street would be a terrace or a place, but they've been using way for a number of years. We would just ask though that east directional be, be added to the plat. Um, whether or not the post office requires that they name it that way is, uh, kind of irrelevant, but our dispatch having that east designator helps because our city's broken into a quadrant, so it helps for new, uh, new people that are being dispatched there. At the July ninth, two thousand nineteen meeting, the planning commission held a public hearing, reviewed the application and are hereby recommending approval of the application with the conditions noted in the staff report. Um, it's been a little while since we've had this. There's a number of, uh, residents who had to sign the plat along with any mortgages that they have, so a couple items that we're just kinda working through on the final plat that, uh, Dustin has no concern with, that we'll be able to work out, but those conditions are noted on the staff report, so, uh, I would ask that, uh, motion include those conditions. There's no public hearing scheduled, but I thought it's a unique enough subdivision that I bring it on the regular agenda, so if you have any questions, I'm available as well as, uh, residents in the neighborhood too, so.
Have you had any feedback from any of the neighborhoods?
Uh, no, there's no rezoning. Nothing's changing, just plating.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Questions?
So these were auditors lots and now they're gonna be actual platted lots?
Yeah, a platted subdivision where we'll actually take ownership of the road. It'll be deeded to the public, so.
Thoughts, please? I'll move to approve the replat. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second? Mr. Thorsted seconds. Been moved and seconded for the final plat approval of South River Estates addition Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Item number nine, the final plat approval of Southdale third edition, a replat, replat, excuse me. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you, your honor, um, and commissioners. This actually has changed a little bit since planning commission first reviewed it, um, at their August thirteenth meeting. Um, initially there were to be one large lot with a vacation in, uh, Ninth Avenue East in between. Um, there's been some changes to the way that the project is setting up, so they changed the plat. I had them come back to planning commission for a revised plat, which you'll see in your staff report there on, uh, December tenth. They recently reviewed that, uh, maintained the four conditions as noted in the staff report. Um, everything's finished up here. This would accommodate, uh, the Katz County Housing Authority's new project south of the high-rise, uh, taking out sort of the barrack style housing, allowing for the multifamily that we've already approved in the PUD. The property to the south of Ninth Avenue West will be what I think we consider phase two now. We'll hear a little bit more about that probably next year, so. Um, with that, there are, uh, representatives of applicant available. There is no public hearing, but again, a unique enough item that I thought put it on regular agenda. I'm available for any questions as well.
Any questions for Mr. Solberg? Any questions from the representatives that are present this evening? It's your pleasure. I'll make a motion to approve. Commissioner Jurdabig moves to approve the final plat of Southdale third edition of a replat. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded for the approval of the Southdale third edition as presented by Mr. Solberg. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Next order of business is item number ten, review the program management agreement with West Fargo Events Incorporated. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commission President and commissioners. Um, I'm also gonna have Jim come up here with me as he helped me, helped me along with John and Katie and several others through these agreements so that we can make sure that we got everything covered that the city needed. Um, we had hoped to present the review of the lease and use agreement, um, first as that is the first item that has to take place and then we do our program management agreement and our parking management agreement. Do you have a problem with me starting with the first one?
Your pleasure.
Okay, all right. So, okay. The first question I, I wanted to answer is I was asked today, um, by President Dardis, um, if our projects are on time and on budget. And in speaking with the contractors in charge of the project, they said that they are both on time and both under budget. So I wanted to give you that information first.
By how much?
Well...
Sorry. Just trying to...
I can't answer that. Um, in your packet, you have three agreements which are to be considered. The first one that we wanted to talk about was the lease and use agreement for Cheyenne thirty-two. Um, and that agreement deals with the parking lot. It's the Northern Lights, which is the northern property on the other side of the parking garage and the lights on thirty-two buildings which encompass the plaza area. And that particular agreement talks about what each of those building owners have to contribute to the city to be able to utilize that parking ramp for, for their particular buildings. And so that sets up the, the fees that they will pay and how it all runs through the city. Um, when Jim comes up here, I'll have him give you the monetary amounts, um, but we've been able to go through this very detailed and I believe that agreement, you'll be very happy with how all these lay out. The second agreement that's gonna come up is the agreement between the city of West Fargo and West Fargo Events for management of that parking garage. Um, within there, we've got detailed work that we've done with, with the builders, with West Fargo Events, with, with everyone, talking about what does it take to manage a parking garage and how do we balance the costs with the management fee and so on and so forth. So Jim will be able to lay that out also as well. And again, the fees that are set forth in the first agreement are what cover the costs for the second agreement for the management fee. So, um, it won't, w- when you look at... When you look at this, the cost to the city at this point is less than zero. We've managed to be able to work that out quite well, and one thing for the public to keep in mind is both the parking garage and the plaza are being funded through a TIF district, so there are no costs to the individual, to the community, for those two amenities. They will be covered by the taxes of the buildings that are brought in around at Northern Lights and Lights on 32. And that... So for the term of the TIF, no, we will not get tax dollars in to help supplement, but all the revenue generated, all the traffic generated, all those other things will come back many times over to the city in the area of sales tax, traffic, all those types of things. So we're really excited about this agreement and where it's taking us. The third agreement is going to be between the City of West Fargo and West Fargo Events for the plazas. That's the One on 32nd Avenue in Cheyenne and the VSW, POW, MIA. We already have an agreement, a smaller one for POW, MIA, but we're going to combine the two and have one management agreement for both going forward. We've worked extensively with John and Katie through Aunt St. Twitchell's office, and we feel that we've covered every base that we need to cover to make sure the city has protections and that we're going to get the very most we can out of these agreements and have them be the most successful that they can be. In the second and third agreement, it references an entertainment district, and I know some of you have spoken to me about that, and the entertainment district has not been approved yet. But as you come to those to approve, my recommendation would be to ask you to approve those two agreements contingent upon approval of the entertainment district by you at a future meeting. The first agreement has nothing in it. That one, we would recommend that you approve, and then with no changes. The other two, keep that in mind for consideration so that we can keep everything moving. A couple items to note in the agreement. These are lease payments made by the building owners for the right to utilize the parking garage. These payments will come directly to the city, and they will help us cover the cost of maintenance and repair. Any excess funds that don't get used by the city will be kept in that fund or in a reserve fund for future repairs and significant repairs in maintenance. For the other buildings, to cover the cost of the plaza, there are CAM fees that will come to the city from all the commercial properties on the north of the plaza and all those that surround the plaza on the south side. Those will help fund the costs of maintaining and having the management agreement to maintain that plaza. With that, the City Commission will receive an annual budget with a contract request. The Finance Director, myself, and other designee that wants to be involved will review that budget firsthand when we first get it, discuss, review, make sure that we feel it's fiscally responsible and that we've got everything covered, and then we will get the contract amount ready, and then that will be brought before full commission for review, consideration, and approval for the following year. So probably in May, June of 2020, we will bring you everything for 2021 so that we have everything in line and we have lots of time to know what's going on. As I said, the funds from the parking garage will go into a separate fund, all on its own. Any excess placed into a repair and replacement fund. The funds received from the plaza will be handled the exact same way. It will have its own fund, and any additional revenues will be put into a repair and replacement fund. Once those funds have been designated for those items, we cannot take those funds and use them for anything else, so I feel that's a really good safeguard for the assets that the city is taking on to make sure that we're all covered. Another comment that I wanted to address, I checked some questioning on this. West Fargo Events is a nonprofit, so one thing I want to explain to you and the public is that any funds that are retained by West Fargo Events, whether it's through sponsorships or advertising, whatever, will be used within the city to benefit the public and those spaces. They can't go and do something else with them. By laws of nonprofit, they're very well-regulated and so... And there's also built in there, if they have funds in excess of 80% of the next year's budget, those excess funds roll over into the city and get put directly into our repair and replacement fund. The next question I was given is, since Epic is involved heavily in this, sometimes the public feels that they don't have a stake in the game, they're just getting all the benefit from it. What their contribution is to West Fargo Events, which in turn is for these plazas, is they have what is considered to be an in-kind rather than paying a monetary amount. At this point, West... Excuse me. At this point, West Fargo Events has two, maybe three employees, and a board made up of city, school, park, and three people at large. Of those two and three employees, there are a lot of other items that are not covered. We're talking things such as marketing promotion, other management facilities-based overhead items. All those items are provided in-kind by Epic at this time in place of paying a fee to West Fargo Events. As things mature, things could change, but for right now, I just felt it was important that the public knew that they do have a benefit, so they are providing something for that benefit. With that, I will let Jim come up here and give you additional details on the agreements, and I will stand here and see if you have questions that you need me to answer.
Thank you, Tina. Commission President, Commissioners, I'll pull this. See if I can get this to work correct. There we go. I'll try not to repeat what Tina has already shared, but mostly want to cover some additional details with the agreements that are out there. We will be the owner of the parking garage. I'm going to start with the, I'm sorry, lease and use agreement, so I'm going to start with the lease first. We're going to be the owner of it, so it is ours. It is ours to maintain and keep track of. The agreement will provide access to the surrounding buildings. That was already covered. We will be responsible, though, for utilities, maintenance, and operation. The term of the agreement is 35 years. The significance of that gets to be is that, and Tim can always talk about this, this helps meet the parking requirements of the surrounding buildings, so they want a long-term lease to go with this to make sure that they have parking available to meet the code requirements. Would that be correct in that? Okay. I don't want to speak for planning. They do that. It sets the lease rate for the five buildings. The total amount to be paid to the City of West Fargo is an annual amount of $200,000 a year, so I want you to keep that in mind as we look at some other dollar amounts that are coming up here. So it contracts with... It's a contract with the West Fargo Events to manage and operate the parking garage that is owned. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Do you want to approve each agreement separately, or do you want to approve them all together?
I'd prefer separately.
Okay, so then you just finished discussing the initial one?
We have a consensus on that.
Before you move into the poll points for the parking management agreement, then ask for, we'll need a vote.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Yep, you're right.
Okay.
Thank you. That's why we work together. So, the... So this is the lease and use, so it brings the money in, and all we're looking to do is to set up a lease agreement so that the buildings can park in our new facility that has been paid for through TIF funds. So yep, I'll stop right there and answer any questions that either one of us could answer.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. This is item 11 on the agenda. For those of you that are watching, Mr. Thorstedt?
It's a question. Jim, on the use of the buildings round, obviously, you know, they need that for their parking, and they're going to use it. As far as reserved spaces, is it one level that's reserved for the tenants? Otherwise, it's open parking. So if someone wants to park there and they're at the hockey arena, that's fine.
So yes, the north facility does have 103 spaces reserved on the third level, and the others are used as you come, what's available.
Come first.
Just wanted to confirm that we had a firm agreement there.
Okay. Again, Commissioners, we're reviewing, we're taking action on item number 11, the lease and use agreement for Cheyenne 32 LLC. Your pleasure.
You're comfortable with 200 grand a year coming in?
Yes. You'll see our costs are a little high to start with, but those will ramp down.
And those amounts actually ramp up, correct?
After 10 years, they are renegotiated and can move up. And remember, they do need these to meet their code, so we do have a good position.
I thought it states in here that they will actually increase based off the Consumer Price Index.
Yes, yes.
Not be necessarily renegotiated. It's already... Okay.
Great questions. I move approve the lease and use agreement. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdavich, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the lease and use agreement for Cheyenne 32 LLC. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Larson, your pleasure. If we're going to 10 or 12?
We are going to, to the parking garage management agreement. I think that's...
That's number 12 for the folks that are watching.
Number 12. Parking management, parking garage management agreement is with, is a contract to be with West Fargo Events to manage and operate the parking garage that is owned by us. They're going to handle services such as scheduling, security, maintenance, daily operations, and so on. The City of West Fargo will remain responsible for utilities. We just thought it was easier to keep it coming straight to us. The monthly fee is $8,600 as scheduled for the first year. That will be adjusted year to year as we bring the budget forward. The amount is based on estimated. Again, we have not operated this for a year, so this could be high, it could be low, but this does, is definitely less than $200,000 a year that we would receive from the buildings as they come online. Should there... There is a clause, though, that if the amount that we pay is in excess, it would come back to the City of West Fargo. If there's a shortfall, we would talk about it, and we'd talk about if we should be funding that additional amount as well. We are responsible for the ramp at the end of the day. It's a five-year term, which will renew automatically unless notice is given, 180 days prior to that termination of the first term, so if we choose, we could terminate for no cause after five years. We can always terminate for cause, but there is room for them to cure any deficiencies. We will, as Mrs. Fisk did state, we will create those repair and replacement funds and operation funds and carry that forward. So that is... See, I'm going to go back one. I'm not moving it. So that's the information I have to present regarding the management agreement with West Fargo Events for the parking garage. Be glad to respond to any questions at this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Larson or Mrs. Fisk?
Um, you know, I generally like the contract, and this is kind of a nitpicky thing, but I sure wish that West Fargo Events is addressed, wasn't in Minot, North Dakota.
We have corrected that, so the current version has their Fargo address, or the West Fargo address.
Wonderful. And just for clarification, does this one involve the entertainment district or just the next one?
This one and the next one, I believe. Does this one, the parking agreement, does too as well?
Yeah, you approve the next, this one and the other one contingent upon approval of the entertainment district.
Yep, so this one be approved contingent upon the entertainment district as well as the next.
Any additional questions? Again, we'll be taking action on item number 12, the separated parking garage management agreement with West Fargo Events, and that is contingent upon the entertainment district being approved. Your pleasure?
I'll move.
Thank you, Commissioners.
As you stated.
Commissioner Jurdavich, it's been moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. It's been moved and seconded to separate, review the separated parking management agreement with West Fargo Events Inc., contingent upon the entertainment district being approved. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next order of business is to review the program management agreement with West Fargo Events. Mr. Larson?
Thank you, Commissioners. Program management agreement is related, is an agreement with West Fargo Events to manage the two plazas that the City of West Fargo owns. These are the plaza that is located, the POW, MIA, which is located downtown West Fargo, and then the one that is plaza, the Lights on 32, out at the Cheyenne, Lights on 32 complex. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we brought up is that there is a $1 per square foot CAM fee that will be coming from the commercial components of those that are at Cheyenne 32. There's about 129,000 square feet, so that would equate to about $129,000 a year that would come to the City of West Fargo to be used for the operations of the plaza. It is based only on the commercial area that is rented, so if they have a vacancy, we would not be collecting the CAM on that. That is a fee that has to be paid on an annual basis.
Mrs. Fisk?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to add in case you weren't sure. The CAM is also on the Northern Lights commercial space, so it's all commercial space within this entire area.
Good clarification. Thank you.
And that is the calculation of 129,000? That was in a previous slide?
Yes, that is correct.
That's all-inclusive?
That's all-inclusive. There is supposed to be some additional commercial space that would be coming online in this area that is not accounted for yet, but I'd like to use a conservative approach to show only what we have in hand right now today.
But the multiplier should still be $1 per square foot?
It still would be $1 per square foot for commercial.
One quick question. Before we move with the CAM, there's no CAM for the plaza up on northern, on the downtown Cheyenne?
No, if I remember correctly, when that was created, that was brought in by the City of West Fargo and did not anticipate taking a CAM from those facilities.
Mr. Thorstedt, did you have a comment also?
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay. He's getting ready.
I can see the look of anticipation on his face.
Any of the naming rights that are sold for the plazas, that has to come back to the City Commission for approval. While the funding, the revenues off that will go back towards the plaza operations, none of the naming has to be approved by Commission, though, and that's because it's our area, so they're going to name it. We want to have approval towards that. This talks about, Mrs. Fisk already talked about, but if there is a surplus in their operations, they can carry up to an 80% of annual budget in a reserve fund that is held by the nonprofit. Anything in addition to that will come into the City of West Fargo. The reason we use this is that when you're in events, it comes from a world that I have a lot of familiarity with from a prior life. The cost, the cash flow is up and down. You have cash flow, you've got to bring in entertainments, you've got deposits to put down, a lot of that, and so this will help them handle cash flow as they go through events through the course of the year. At any time, though, we never really lose it, because should they cease to operate or we cease to have a contract with them, these funds are to be returned back to the City of West Fargo. And that talks about that. Any excess funds that are coming from this arrangement does come back to, and we'll place them also into a repair and replacement fund or an operations fund to hold in for future operations or needs of the plaza. One thing I did not have in my slides, and I apologize for, is the fee that we're looking to be initiating with is $14,000 a month, or $168,000, but you remember, we're also getting the CAM fee to offset that. In the events business, in this in particular, there's a ramp up, and we will have costs. We anticipate that in our annual budget, and so with that anticipation and with the funds coming in from the CAM, we should be able to net about to what we expected. We budgeted $60,000, in case you're wondering what that amount was.
But the 160 and 129 is $40,000, Jim.
So we'd still, so we'd still be money ahead. Based on budgeted dollars.
Okay.
Questions?
Just for clarity now, any existing agreements are canceled, null and void, this replaces all, and any agreements we have right now?
Yeah, we had an interim agreement with them, and this supersedes that.
Okay.
Effective this date?
This agreement, you know, we didn't cover, but our anticipation is this agreement becomes in effect, uh, January first, two thousand twenty.
Anything else for us, Mr. Larson?
Um, that, that is all I have to cover.
Mrs. Fisk, anything?
They said the monthly amount was fourteen thousand?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I, I thought in the agreement it said a different number.
Uh, yes, it did. That agreement, uh, the amount was originally set with the understanding that the, the funds from the CAM would be coming directly into West Fargo Events, and we are removing them and having them come directly to the city. Those are, those are per agreement to come to city, and, uh, we'd like to keep, stay in control of them.
So with that, are there other changes from the document that I have in front of me? If that, I mean, if that's one, is there, are there other changes before we approve this that aren't reflected in this document?
The only other changes, and I haven't been able to see that exact one, that was, I didn't see the one that was put in your packet, um, just remember, we also have terminology in there that defines, um, what they can and can't advertise as far as within the spaces and around there, and, um, that was very well defined, and we're gonna have another agreement that's also going to define that again. So, um, that was really the only other major change, and it was just more adding a word that says "all" so that we have total control of our advertisement within the space.
Mr. Thorsted?
Jim, when do we start paying them fourteen grand a month, starting in January?
That would start January, yes.
Okay, and businesses aren't gonna be open down south for a while, so we're gonna, we're gonna start out in the hole here, how, how are we gonna fund that? Major credit card, or?
Um, the parking, let's see, the parking ramp itself, the city will become owner of that approximately February first, because it's contingent on certificate of occupancy on their first building, which will be around February first. The Plaza, yes, that will, um, be contingent upon the certificate of occupancy of the second building, which they determine will probably, probably be done around June one, and they have a Plaza opening date of approximately the same time. Part of the reason for the fee starting now is that there's so much work to get done, to get ready, to get to that spot, that if, we can't just wait till June one and just start, so that was the reasoning behind it.
Well, I, I understand that logic, but I just say it's fourteen thousand times six months before business one opens, or beyond, I mean, you got money sitting around for that, or?
Well, I'm sorry, um, the first building does have commercial space in it, so that starts February first. So those CAMs would start coming in in February, it wouldn't be the full amount, because we still have a long way to go.
So there'll be a roll in February with the businesses are opening, okay.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Jertovic?
Um, in, when we think of the events that will be happening on the Plaza, is there going to be any, do we have an expectation of any kind of, uh, smaller number of events that might happen in this first year due to construction happening? I mean, there's still going to be construction happening all around that, is that going to limit the number of events that are gonna happen there next summer?
Um-
I would call, Mrs. Fisk, excuse me, I would call on Mike, uh, the administrator of West Fargo Events.
Mike Gomonton. And I'm not sure how to ask that question, because I have nothing to compare it to, but I've just, what, what is the, what is the expectation of that, I guess?
My apologies to my attire, I was trying to make a hockey rink, or, or, excuse me, an ice skating rink right before I came to the, uh, meeting tonight. Uh, we do have a preliminary plan already put, uh, together that I would happily show with any of you. We do have, um, some other small festivals planned, family fun nights, movie nights, um, and some small concerts already ready to go, and then we do also have promoters calling us, asking if they can put on their events. Some of them would be new to our area, and then others would be already, uh, existing events that wanna try out a new venue to be able to bring it into town.
Would you please share that with the rest of the Commissioners? Obviously, Mr. Simmons and I are on West Fargo Events, but if you'd be so kind, please.
I will happily, uh, send that off to you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Again, we're on item ten, program management agreement with West Fargo Events. Thoughts, comments?
I just have a, a comment under article five of the, uh, agreement, on the draft agreement of management fee was seventy-five hundred dollars a month, but that is now at fourteen thousand?
That is correct, because we've made the adjustment of removing the revenues that they were using to offset that, because those are coming to the city instead of to them.
Okay.
I'd like to also make one more clarification, um, we do have the dollar amount for the startup costs, and that dollar amount is eighteen thousand, they do have a schedule for that, um, that we'll attach to the agreement, and this is a, a, a number of sundry items of, as you start up into a new operation for these, uh, example cones, they need a number of cones for sectioning off, and things of that nature, so-
One-time purchases.
One-time purchases, yes, and that dollar amount is not, is not filled in in your agreement, but we did receive that dollar amount later this afternoon. So, if, if this was to be considered for approval, we'd ask that that eighteen thousand be considered to be added into the language.
I have to admit, it, it feels like the fourteen thousand a month that we're starting with in January, when the first event happens in June, is the startup cost to me.
Uh, as far as the startup costs?
Well, I, I mean, that's how I look at it, it feels like we're paying the startup cost, but the monthly fee for the first six months of the year until we get to an event. Um, at least as it relates to, um, Lights and Thirty-Second piece.
I can give you a couple comments on that, that might, this might answer your question, if not, just ask me more. Um, the amount that Jim is talking about is physical purchases that are being made, physical one-time purchases that have, we have to have for that area. The fourteen thousand is to get the, the Plaza to do the promotion, to get the people involved, to get them on board, some of the initial costs, because there's still electricity costs out there, there's still other, there's other things going on out there, and we've gotta get everything in order, we've gotta get some programming done, we've gotta get planning done, we've gotta get all these, you can't wait until June to advertise, you can't, all those types of things are what are doing the, causing the fourteen thousand dollars. Now bear in mind, as we get through this and start getting towards June, and we're doing our, our whole market, our study for twenty-twenty-one, we will see where costs are landing, and they'll, they'll have a better idea, and we'll have a better idea, and that amount could change. And again, any excess comes back, so, um, it's kind of in that order, but just, that was kind of where we landed, um, we don't wanna wait too long, but these aren't for physical purchases, these are for the intangibles that we absolutely have to have to get that space programmed and moving and running.
So, the question is, we understand it's gonna take a little time to ramp up and get rolling, you're not gonna be there the first day, but, or, how are we gonna pay those costs? We gonna pay that from economic, uh, development sales tax, or how do you plan to do with it, and are we, can we expect to get reimbursed at some point if they ever have excess or not, or is that just gonna be our, our cost of getting this going?
That's a very good question. Um, the plan would be, my request would be, to take those funds from economic development sales tax, until at which point we're getting funding back, and at that point, um, that's something that we can come to as a commission and say, do you want that to be a loan to the Plaza account, the Plaza fund, or do you want it to be, once you've got it, you keep it? That's up to you, we can do it as a loan, or we can do it as a purchase, or as a, as a, as a, just one-time thing. Either way, I know that the development of the buildings, the development of the Plaza, the sales tax returns are going to be amazing. I mean, it's, there's just no doubt, the activity generated from it is going to create more sales tax for the community, which in turn puts our funds back into the economic development fund and our infrastructure fund.
With all due respect, um, we're talking about, you know, the, the agreement that's in front of us is, is, uh, needs amendments, needs changes to it with regard to the revenue flow, the CAMs and all of that type of thing, because it still says seventy-five hundred, and now it's fourteen thousand. Am I correct?
Correct. You, what I would suggest, so that we can continue moving forward, would be, then, I thought that amount had been amended in there, I, I apologize for that, is to have, if you want to, if you are willing to approve the agreement, to say, to change, put the startup cost in there of sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars, the monthly fee of fourteen thousand dollars, and the agreement contingent upon the entertainment district. Um, everything was happening, and we were trying to get the final numbers in today, and I apologize for them not being in the agreement till now, but those are the numbers that we would go with before we would ask you to, to sign on if you approved.
I respect that, Mrs. Fisk, but I'm old school, and if it isn't in the agreement, I'm not signing hands, and I think it requires the, you know, the commission president's signature, so, you know, I don't know, I, I guess I'd look at Mr. Shockley, how quickly can these changes be made? It's the holiday season, you're a busy man.
Well, the agreement, uh, can be changed pretty quickly, but this will be contingent upon the approval of the entertainment district, so I actually wouldn't be presenting it to you for your signature until after that entertainment district is approved.
So that, okay, I, I think we have a consensus. Mike, that would, right. Our concerns have been, uh, answered, thank you. Your pleasure, Commissioners, we are working again on item number ten, program management agreement of the West Fargo Events Inc.
I'm fine with all those conditions you've laid out, and, uh, the, the one additional thing, I, I would like an accounting of what our costs are on the front end, and then the commission can decide at some point what they wanna do, if anything, with, with our upfront costs, I guess we're, we're contributing to it.
I'll wait until, I'll wait until you have a second.
Is there a second please? Commissioner Thorsted moved. Second. Commissioner Olson seconds. Mrs. Fisk?
Thank you. We are getting budgets from West Fargo Events that we will be able to, to share with you as to how we compile the costs, and then we will be watching monthly and working with them closely to monitor where the costs are coming in, where the funds are going out, so that you guys are aware as well, since this is taxpayer money, or sales taxpayer money, so, thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, a motion on the floor to approve with the contingencies. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, I was advised that there are no construction updates, is that correct, Mr. Scott?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Uh, call on Mrs. Fisk. Oh, we got Jim back at the podium, no, Mrs. Fisk, as the city administrators report, please.
Thank you, Commission President and Commissioners. Um, I wanna start out with an item that, um, I wanna bring forth to you for approval. Um, the sanitation department has been having a lot of problems with their dozer that they use at the landfill. Um, they were hoping that they could limp it along through twenty-twenty, um, but at this point, it's having continual, continual breakdowns that are costing more and more money, and it's causing issues, they can't get their work properly done, and so on and so forth. So Jim has been working closely with Tom to try to find a really good solution. What he's come up with, at this time, Tom and Jim have found that, um, that the cost to purchase a loader, or a dozer, sorry, I don't know the difference, dozer, uh, is three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars approximately. The current five-year rate, if you're gonna do a five-year payment, is three-point-six percent, and so, um, what I need approval for this evening is, since it's not in the twenty-twenty budget, to allow them to purchase and finance the dozer, but we would also like to do the financing through the city at a lesser interest rate, in an inter-fund loan, and then it would be paid back to the city at three percent over the course of five years.
Is this the type of equipment that you'd purchase or lease?
Purchase.
And have we looked into that?
Yes. One other component that, uh, I had not, uh, shared with Tina is that the, the purchase is going to come through a, a bidding component called WellSource, which is where it's a federal group that goes out and collectively looks for it. Even though it is a local, it does go through WellSource, it's through Butler, we have received records on it, tests on the fluids, tests on its current condition, it is a used unit, but we can't afford a new one.
And the used unit is three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand?
Yes. We're hoping to, we, we're looking, we'll find out soon if we can get a trade-in value, which would reduce that cost, uh, but they, that, we don't have that exact amount today, but we're looking to get this price down even lower.
Is that, uh, an item that you'd like action on?
Um, yes, if you'd like to hear from our sanitation manager on what it is that has been happening with the piece of equipment, he is definitely here and can talk on that. What I'm asking for just this evening is to, um, give us approval to move forward with the purchase of a dozer.
Mr. Sir, I wanna hear from Mr. Clark. Thomas, would you join us, please? Sanitation, uh, department head, Tom Clark.
Commission President, Commissioners, um, we've been working with the, uh, current equipment, uh, we bought it used, um, it's a nineteen ninety-four model, um, the, the up-going, our ongoing upkeep of this, uh, is big machinery and big dollars, and we've gone through, uh, a lot of different modifications through, uh, general equipment to try to keep it operating, uh, in the manner that we use it. So at this point, the only thing that's really left, uh, to break is the engine and transmission. We've pretty much done everything else. Can go at any time, could last another, you know, five years or so, but the, the rate at which it's breaking down is, is more and more frequent. Uh, we feel that it would be, uh, advantageous to replace at this point, even with a used one, uh, a newer model to keep operating in the, in the manner that we need to. It's not only the cost of it breaking down, but the cost of us not being able to operate at the landfill and having to rent equipment to, uh-
The dollar amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars, is that a net trade, or is-
That is not without, that is without trade. We had Butler Machinery out, uh, this weekend to take a look at our current, uh, equipment to see what they would, uh, offer us in trade. We have not gotten a, uh, report from that yet.
So you have Butler Equipment and General Equipment, are, are you, you're negotiating with them, or both, or?
Butler Equipment has the piece of equipment that we would like to replace it, yes. General Equipment is who we've, uh, been, because they work on that brand.
Please, Mr. Jertovic, how used of a piece of equipment is this?
This is a twenty-thirteen, I believe. It was, uh, previously owned by the city of Fargo, uh, at their landfill, it's a high-track, uh, piece of equipment, uh, which just means it runs way up, and, uh, it's actually made for, uh, trash use, it's designed for that purpose. The bulldozer that we are currently using was used at a rock quarry.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any question, additional questions for Mr. Clark? Thank you, sir. So, uh, Mrs. Fisk, our city administrator has asked us for, uh, that this be an actionable item. Your thoughts, Commissioners?
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the used equipment.
Commissioner Olson moves to, uh, for the purchase of a used piece of equipment, uh, we won't state a dollar amount, plus or minus taxes, whatever. Uh, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jertovic, been moved and seconded, uh, for the approval of a used piece of, uh, Caterpillar equipment for our land, garbage use, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisk, the rest of your report, please.
Okay. Last meeting, I spoke with you about a house at eight oh one, ten and a half Avenue West that had come back to the city, and it's in the process of condemnation. City staff is working on asbestos abatement for the property, and we need to tear the home down. One thing I asked of you was, would you consider using it for a possible habitat for humanity location, or do you want it cleared and sold? And so I just, I need, and I guess this, again, is an actionable item, I suppose, and I apologize for that, I should've put it on the regular agenda as well, um, but if, and if you don't wanna make the decision this, today, and you- to make the decision this, today, and you want me to put it on the next meeting as an a- as an agenda item, I certainly will do that.
Commissioners? So the, there is a concern that there are abatement issues there, or, or possible abatement issues?
Possible. We don't know for sure, but we have to check it-
Certainly.
First of all, and we have to pay for that cost, so.
Do you have an approximate figure of what that might be, of what our investment would be, if in fact we do deed it over to Habitat?
Uh, no, I do not, because we, it's something we knew we had to do, so I haven't gotten the bid yet back from Pierre in code enforcement.
Commissioners, your thoughts?
The question is whether we want to donate the Habitat.
Need it to Habitat. I would make- Purchase it for a dollar?
Twenty-one dollars.
Twenty-one dollars.
One dollar and twenty-dollar filing fee.
Bought it for back taxes.
I guess I would make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second, please? Been moved by Commissioner Jertovic, second. Mr. Thorsted, second. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, move forward on the possibility of deeding that. Uh, you'll have to help me with the address again, Tina.
Eight oh one, ten and a half Avenue West.
Eight oh one, ten and a half. Further discussion? Hearing then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I will keep you up to date as to where we are, what the costs are, and if Habitat for Humanity, if they're interested in this property. I know, Bernie, you've worked closely with them, maybe either if you want to give me a contact person or something, or if you want to reach out to your contact, however you want to, just, we can talk later and make sure we keep that moving.
Great.
Okay. Um, Dustin was going to give you an update on the engineering department and some of the changes that are taking place, but we've decided to move that to a January meeting. Um, there's just a lot of stuff going on right now, and we felt it was best to make sure that everything was in place, and, um, then bring everything forward and have it in organized presentation and all the information correct. Um, for your information and for your invitation, there will be a pizza party at City Hall tomorrow from eleven-thirty to one, and that's for the City Hall staff. We've been putting the staff at City Hall through a lot. If, if you haven't noticed, every time you walk in here, someone's sitting in a different spot. And so we've had people moving and moving and moving and moving, and as a way to say thank you, um, for, for them being a participant in everything that we've been trying to accomplish, we wanted to thank them with a pizza party. And so as commissioners, you're more than welcome to attend. We'd like to see you there. Um, and the biggest change you'll find right now is engineering, no, planning. It changes it by the day. Planning will be moving into the old courtroom, or the old commission chambers, what was the courtroom. And so, um, over the next week or two after Christmas, you come back, you're going to have to find Tim and his people in the old courtroom. So, uh, Larry's not moving, so. Everybody else is going to go, but we're leaving him where he's at. Public Works Director interviews closed, and they went well, and we are, we have an offer pending, and so I'll give you more information on that once I get a final answer on that. Um, reminder, we are closed next Tuesday, Wednesday, for Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and then the following Wednesday for New Year's Day. We work on New Year's Eve, because you gave us the day after Thanksgiving off. Um, one very important note, I want to say welcome to, welcome, I can, when I can talk, welcome to the Building Inspection Department. Today is their first day as an official department of the city, and as official employees of the city, and we're very, very excited to have them with us as part of our family. And the other new person is Troy Opstal. He's a civil engineering technician working with Dustin, and he started today. Dustin wasn't around, he had to fend for himself, but he did a pretty good job. So that is all I have. Do you have questions for me?
Questions for Mrs. Fisk?
Just one question. Uh, the bulldozer discussion, uh, kind of keep my interest on the fee study. Remember, we have a fee study going on on the different garbage, water, sewer rates, all that stuff, but three hundred and twenty-six thousand, I don't know how fast we go through bulldozers, but I think we want to probably put that into our formula when we're, we're contemplating landfill costs. Um, I don't know if it's included or not. It sounds like we have to borrow money for, uh, to pay for this, which, you know, it came up faster than we thought. But anyway, I, I'd be interested to know, uh, where we're at in those fee studies, because it's been several months since we talked about that.
And, and I appreciate you bringing that up. The fee studies are for water and sewer. Um, we did do a study on sanitation, and there were some actual fee changes that were approved by you, but that had not been implemented. I know Tom will be implementing those. I don't foresee that having any disloader payment having a huge effect on sanitation, or having to adjust any rates for that. Um, but we will keep you posted as to the final change in their budget. As far as the water and sewer rates, I know they sent out some more questions and so on and so forth last week, and I believe they were going to try and get us something by, let me ask Jim, the end of the month? End of this month, so that we can have it forward and bring it to commission for review, discussion, and approval.
Yeah, I don't know if the sanitation rates included tipping rates at the landfill, but-
Oh, yeah, it does.
Something, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand's, uh, serious money, so.
Yes. And we will, we, I will speak with Tom. We'll take a look at that, too, and Jim can work, make sure we have everything covered the way we need to. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Thorsted. Good point. Anything else from Mrs. Fisk? Any correspondence, Mrs. Fisk, that you'd like to share with us?
Um, no, we just have a whole bunch of thank yous and Christmas cards from people thanking you for your business this year, so. Other than that, I do not.
Does anyone, uh, department heads or commissioners have anything, uh, non-agenda, good of the order? I have a question for, uh, West Fargo Events. Do we have ice at the plaza?
We've got a lot of water right now.
You have a future in politics for that answer. Uh, anybody else for anything for the good of the order? If not, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas on behalf of all of us up here. We got a consensus on that. Uh, thank you for all that you've done, and as we get close to, uh, Christmas, be safe. With that, commissioners, Commissioner Olson moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jertovic, second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.